We have new items of discussion emerging of the bank accounts. Denny, you want to talk to us about that?
Sure. Okay, so in reviewing with the change from First Niagara to Key Bank, they're looking at different things. There's a potential the Key Bank might start charging us hard dollar fees. So what we sat down with our relationship manager and went through the accounts and looking at a way to reduce the cost that we incur. And so we looked at Judy and I looked at three accounts. The revolving loan account, which has very low activity. And it's an account that evidently back in the day, the county used to give out to certain organizations as a loan that would be paid back. So there really isn't a whole lot of activity in that account. I'll skip over hotel tax and go to taxes paid under protest. That money basically is interest that to me should just go to the county general fund and close it out. Now taxes paid under protest, that account was started mainly because of back a number of years, there were some that were paid by sped and they were large amounts. And prior to me being in office, they chose to keep 100% of the taxes paid under protest, which is wrong. If the taxes were paid under protest, they should be applied to the appropriate account in tax year. And then a letter should be sent to the taxing district saying, "These were paid under protest, you need to escrow 25%." So either one of these, if we do that, whether it be the revolving loan account, if we have any activity, or taxes paid under protest, we can handle that in AccuFund. We don't need to have a separate bank account.
Okay.
Now, on the hotel tax account, it's similar in that we receive the funds in, but it's a more active account. So we receive the funds in and then we distribute those to the Warren County Visitors Bureau on a monthly basis. The, trying to think of the document we got. The ordinance that we have, if we look at collection and distribution of revenue, it says the county treasurer shall collect the tax and deposit the revenues received from the tax in a quote, it's a special fund. Now it doesn't say, you could say a fund is a fund in AccuFund, the software, or you could say a special fund is a checking account. So I sent an email out to my counterparts across the state and without measuring, I would say it's about 50/50. Fifty percent-
And with that, Denny, did they just pass through the general fund?
Fifty percent put it into the general fund and about 50% keep a totally separate checking account.
Okay.
Now, our Warren County's ordinance says a special fund. Doesn't define it to be a bank account. And again, with this fund, Judy and I believe that we could basically handle it through AccuFund. Okay? And deposit it into the general fund.
Is it worth it just to take a look at the ordinance and update it?
Okay.
Well, I know, but we can update it again, you know?
Well, but it doesn't sound like it needs to be updated.
Well, I'm just saying to provide clarity to, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't, I don't think that there's any problem with what you're proposing at all. I mean, technically, I don't see why it would need to be in a separate account at all. Right? Because it's accounted through the same system anyway.
Right. The only people that would question that would be us, so.
Yeah. All right.
So now, from a, I will tell you just from a state level auditing perspective. If you were to ask a state auditor, obviously, they want everything in separate checking accounts. So if they come to audit, they don't have to, if you want to say, "Well, look through the general fund and all the activity." Whereas if they're gonna, if they would audit hotel tax, then they would be looking at a checking account with no other activity. So it would make it easier for an audit. That's one perspective. But we, obviously, we have an audit of our general fund as it is anyway. So, but from a state, I mean, obviously, if you ask somebody from the state, they want it to be as easy as it can be. So there's nothing that mandates we have to have a separate checking account. So what this will do is if we put these through the general fund, combine them, it will reduce the fees that we accrue. But with Key Bank, we get credits towards, from our balances that we have on hand. So in effect, we don't get hard dollar fees. Our fees are waived. And I will say that if you talk to the counties across the state, no treasurer's office accepts any fee. If a financial institution wants to charge fees, they basically look for a different financial institution. And I've sent that message to my, to our relationship manager. They're well aware of it, that if they start to charge us hard dollar fees, we will shop for a different bank.
Okay.
All right, so that's my proposal, is to combine these three into the general fund.
All right. Thank you, Denny.
Yep.
Yeah, very well understood and you make a good case for this, so. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments from anyone on that? Ben or Jeff, anything more?
I think that the more we can consolidate the accounts, the better. I mean, that's why we have accounting software. And I mean, every county's a little bit different as far as the number of accounts that they carry. There are several counties in the area that have dramatically reduced their number of accounts. And frankly, it makes it easier to keep track of everything, you know?
All right.
Not, if we're done with this subject, I just want to make one other statement. I will have coming to the commissioners, new signature cards for our bank accounts due to the retirement of Mana. So when you see those coming through, what I'm doing is we will, we will all sign the new signature cards, which will then be submitted. I'm getting them ready now, so that Mana's last day is next Thursday, so that we can get Gabby's signature onto our accounts for when we need it. So when you see those coming through, that's what it's about.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry if that piece wasn't on the agenda, but I'm just, you'll see them coming through.
It's fine.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
When is she getting sworn in as deputy?
Um, good question. I haven't. I'll have to do that probably beginning of next week.
Okay. If there's going to be a little ceremony or anything, I'd try to attend.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Cindy, do you have anything more? Or do you want me to go ahead and push?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So quarterly objectives, mine I can cover through the active projects. So the telephones are still scheduled to be replaced here in the next couple of weeks. So the courthouse should have new telephones within the month anyway, which is obviously very exciting. So we're going to have a few features.
They're just started.
Yeah. I'm still very pleased with the rollout of this and how the IT department has been able to handle it. It's, it's ended up costing less than we even estimated, which was radically less than the estimate that we got from outside vendors. Yeah, and their estimate on what it was going to reduce in terms of our usage costs has pretty much hit the mark or exceeded it. So we're doing very well. I'm anticipating now that we're going to be able to pay this back off in like, more like a year and a half rather than, I mean, we're paying for it upfront, but it's going to pay for itself in like a year and a half rather than-
It's a good return.
Yeah. I'd say. Not to mention the fact that we're getting good reliable phones. I mean, I'm sure you, I'm not alone when I'm dropping calls and calling in audits and it's not finishing the voicemails and stuff. It's getting pretty frustrating. So anyway, we're on track. The Public Safety Day, we met with our committee late last week. So Warren County is having a Public Safety Day. It looks like we'll be partnering with Lowe's tentatively in order to have it in their parking lot because they already have a fireman's appreciation event that they were scheduling for August. We were planning on doing the Public Safety Day in early September, so we said, "Why don't we just combine efforts, use your liability insurance in your parking lot?" And we're looking ideally at September 9th, so that'll be the Saturday before 9/11. So we can kind of make it partly a Public Safety Day where people can come learn about fire services, get their receipt, their baby seats checked, and, you know, all kinds of safety things, but also make it at the same time a kind of thank you to the firefighters, any and that personnel. So tentatively, mark the calendar for September 9th. We're still kind of getting the final verification, but looking like good.
Can I just interrupt you there?
Yep.
Thank you for, for taking the lead on the Public Safety Day. And I certainly would like to attend, but that's my daughter's wedding day.
Oh, that's a pretty good excuse.
What's your point?
Yeah, I'll be a little busy then.
You don't want to call in?
I might be able to call it in.
Okay. Other projects. Well, we could actually start knocking some of these off. I mean, the roof is done, boiler, where are we on the board?
I've got a, I've got a contact in with the, with the engineering firm. They had to get back, I mean, they've evaluated it. Right now, they're working on whether replacement plan is going to be.
Right. What was with the, I remember we agreed to something on the planning to the recycling center. See update on that?
I have to schedule time with them to go out and they're basically going to survey the property in order to get a complete map of the warehouse and the property that surrounds it, so that we can then use that to lay out the plan. I haven't pushed that too hard because I've been waiting to, Dan just is putting together the grant application for Nestor Resources to do the, basically the feasibility study and put together the plan of operation for the recycling center. So I was kind of focused on that before getting, and I wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable with that before having the engineer go out and take a look at the property.
Okay.
Well, the county being filled for the engineer's work on this, though, because we really haven't approved anything and any expenses for that.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons why I've waited, like, is to, I wanted to make sure that, the most important piece is the resource organization, Nestor Resources, to be involved in it just because they've basically been involved in setting up recycling centers in other counties. So now that, once Dan puts the grant application together, we'll send that in and then depending upon how that shakes out with DEP, that'll kind of be one of the markers as to how this moves forward, one way or the other. If they approve it and they cover everything, then I think we can take the next step of, you know, the next, like, take a look at what the next steps are going to be as far as like evaluating how it would be set up.
As long as we don't spend any dollars on this until we get further into what the results are of this study.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't know that I would authorize anything that would cost money before consulting you and Commissioner Capone.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any other project updates?
I would like to comment that I've been working every week with the EOC Strategic Planning Committee. And we do have a conference call scheduled for later in June in regard, with the state in regards to what do we center in Mitchell Building. And on the strategic plan, some of the objectives that we're looking at is rather in line with what we could incorporate at the Mitchell Building. So that was kind of a new revelation to me to see that what we are looking at with the strategic plan could be worked on in coordination with us at the county. So this is something that is, in the planning stage, of course, but something that we could also utilize the Mitchell Building for. So hopefully, we'll have something a little more in place by the time that phone call occurs. And I would encourage the two of you to take an active role in attending that phone conference if at all possible.
Sure, send, send over the info, I'll try to make it.
I will do that. And also, I wanted to have Karen at the meeting today. And one thing after another, I neglected to send an email. I'm very interested in looking at spectometry for assessment. And I think that it's a very viable project for us to look at. And I think that it's a revenue generator for us. And I think that it's something we should strongly consider. And I would like Karen to maybe attend our next workshop so that she can fully outline what her expectations are if we were to move forward with that and kind of pose this to the public so that they can start learning about what this, what the advantages of this is for the county. And give them a little more opportunity to understand what the situation is.
That's great. I'm glad you're taking the lead on that. It's one of those projects that I've been a proponent of since before being elected, really. And one of the main reasons, I guess, is because you've got plenty of people that have built additions and buildings and such on their property, haven't reported it, aren't getting taxed for it, which means that the rest of us are burdening, you know, taking on more of the burden.
Right.
So it's only equitable.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the money spent in the beginning will be-
Offset almost immediately, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. And I think that we should probably try to work on this and get this going and moving more quickly. So that's my objective on that. So I will see that Karen attends the next meeting and maybe we can move this along.
My, the only two, or the two things that I would say are, one is, and I would preface this by saying, like, I totally support the utilization of spectometry by the county, is, one is, is the, basically, the one thing is, is the figuring out the budgeting situation, like, you know, how we're going to pay for it, like, where it's going to come from, you know? And I think that as a part of our mid-year review, this is something that could come into play with that. So my recommendation would be to talk with Judy, you know, kind of spitball how money can be allocated in order to, how to start this up. Like, so that would be one thing. And then the second thing is, is that having Karen here would be good. I think that there should be some kind of discussion about a public rollout or some kind of rollout explaining the utilization of it, even if we could take some information from the presentation that was given to us a couple of weeks ago. Just because I think that there needs to be a real solid, you know, delivery of what it's going to be if we make the decision to pull the trigger on it and move forward.
I appreciate your comments, Jeff. And yes, Judy and I have been working on where, within the budget, we can make this work. And seeing the vast turnaround of the results of, of having this in place, I think, speaks for itself. And yeah, Karen and I have been working on how we're prepared to present this. We are, we are working in that effort.
Because even, like, my understanding of this is, I don't know that they could get a flyover in this year, right? I mean, it would have, it would be something that we'd issue for next year.
They thought maybe in September.
In September?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The key is-
In Doc, September.
Yeah, the key is to get on board with all the other counties around us that are doing it.
Right.
Because that makes it way cheaper.
Yeah.
Yes. So I think we need to act on this. If we're going to, you know, consider this, we need to look at this thing so we can make a decision.
I would just throw out, would you want to do it when the leaves have fallen?
Well, they're working with other counties that surround us and doing the flyovers of theirs. And they were telling us that if we were to include Warren County, it would be at a lesser rate. And I believe that's probably why they're looking at September. I think late August and September. But yeah, I'm sure they're experts in this. They must know when, when the best time to fly over is. So we're taking their lead on that. But I appreciate your comments, Denny.
Part of the problem with the fall, I believe, was that the shadows were too long for most of the day.
Oh.
So they have to do it towards the end of summer.
I would just be curious on how much the foliage would cover of what you're looking for.
I don't know.
Because I can just tell you from past experience of writing in tax claim when they bring this, when people bring the pictures into their property, you can't even see the cams because they're running with the trees.
Right.
You know, you're going to miss out. What is it?
They are coming at it from multiple angles, so it's not like a satellite.
Oh, okay. I'm cleaning.
Yeah, they're doing it like three degrees, I think.
Right.
Not three, like three separate degrees.
Oh, we're going to have to see if they reach out to your quarters, Denny. So what, what?
No, one project I forgot was the RRC. I did end up giving them some of our furniture from the county warehouse. And I believe they are getting their preliminary drawings back pretty soon. So it's really a chamber project, but since we're so heavily invested in it, I wanted to try to basically keep you updated, just say there's not much of an update yet.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things we're going to have to have a conversation with, you know, about at some point is what we're going to contribute to that project.
Yeah.
I'm actually-
Yeah. I'm kind of waiting until they get us back a number for how much they need.
Yeah, because, well, I mean-
Because we never, due to sunshine, we never really-
Yeah, I mean, we've had emails from, you know, the WACCPI asking for what our, you know, what our legitimate attention is. And we've never responded to any of them.
Right.
And, you know, I-
Well, again, I think they need to kind of sort of the costs. Currently, we don't know if it's going to be, you know? Well, we know it's probably going to be more than a million dollar project, but we don't know how much.
Yeah.
And- They're, the rural community college.
A regional college, yeah.
Yeah, they're diverse, the ones that-
I'm going to go out for a minute.
Oh, you just heard a million dollars, you're like, "What?" Not our million dollars.
Just part of the commissioner, the commissioner getaway house. Does not exist. Believe me, it doesn't.
All right, that's all I have for projects. Either of you have any?
Well, the one thing that, I don't know if he's having influence on that part or not, but the one problem I have with the rural regional college is the name. You know, when you say rural regional college, it sounds like you're only referring to rural opportunities. And, you know, I, we cover what a nine or 11 county region. It would be nice if it just says regional college.
They, they're definitely changing the name.
They are.
The, they have a branding team that's like putting together a whole package for it.
Right.
So, because they have an issue with the name.
Yeah, that's just the technical name. They hired some big firm out of-
Phil with the old name.
Pittsburgh.
It was a Pittsburgh, yeah.
With a silly name.
One of the silliest.
Actually, I said that. Anyway.
For an agreement with me, that's okay. All right, so do we want to go over the agenda for the commissioners' meeting?
Yep.
All right, looking at the Motorola service agreement. Is Todd there?
Todd didn't come. He explained to me what it was. I forgot that it's something I know something about. This is basically the overall contract that the county has with Motorola. We re-up it every five years. The point of it is that in a disaster situation where our communications go down for some reason, they will send somebody up within two hours in order to fix it. It's, I mean, if we don't do this, we are asking for disaster. You know, they are, they are the ones that service our entire, like, emergency radio communication system, so. The other thing I did, and one of the main reasons I originally asked him to be here was because if we go off the system before the five years of the contractor up, I wanted to make sure that we could, you know, get out of it. And he said that we can. And that besides that, Motorola is most likely, you know, would probably be one of the main bidders anyway to implementing a new system. So there's not really much risk.
All right.
We got to do it.
The repository taxes, are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay, repository taxes. I'm looking at these and, and pleasant township. Is that for the whole trailer park? The entire trailer park?
Yeah, just for one little home.
Does anyone know?
Yeah, Phil just said it's just one trailer home.
Okay. All right. All right, thanks, Phil.
Sure.
And I don't know, anyone have any issue with any of those?
Does anyone know anything about the intergovernmental agreement? Oh, this was the thing that was sitting there assigned.
Firearms agreement?
Yeah, there's no class to the county on this. This is so that adult probation can get their firearms training. But it is not going to cost the county any dollars.
I like the sound of that. All right, that sounds good. Is that it, Phil? Oh, children and youth. Is there something for children and youth, Pam?
Yeah, it looks standard.
Yeah.
I did want to add a proclamation.
Okay.
The Garland Presbyterian Church is celebrating their bicentennial. And so, once they hit the 200-year mark, I feel like it's time to get recognized.
Yeah.
So I wrote, I had Julie write up a proclamation, basically just complimenting them along with all civic organizations in the county for their work to keep civil society alive and well. The resolution really just says, proclaims June 17th as a day of recognition for the bicentennial of the church.
Okay, sounds good.
Pretty straightforward.
I'll get that added and get an updated packet sent out today.
All right, thank you, Pam. That sounds good.
The other thing that we should think about is the YMCA's sesquenntennial this year. I don't know when their celebration is, but we should write a proclamation for that, too.
Yeah, that's been requested and I sent that information to Pam.
She wanted to test that to Julie. She did a good job on this one.
Yeah, they sent us a-
Oh, they did?
A shell, yeah, a template, I guess.
Okay.
I think Pam just needed to fill in some of the blanks because she was working with their grant writers from the Y.
Okay.
Didn't we do that last year?
Well, maybe, but this is the 150th.
Yeah, this is their 150th and I think that that is, I think that was sent to you as well, Pam.
Yeah, I remember it being sent, but I thought we did that last year.
No. But maybe, we can look back to what happened.
Ready for schedule stuff? I mean, as far as department committee updates, we have a department head meeting tomorrow, so. Oh, did you meet on, did your committee meet on laser piece yet? Okay.
Very much, probably not.
Okay, we should do that. Not by tomorrow, but.
Thanks.
Yeah. I forget who all was on that, you and you.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I'll have to look back at the meeting. Yeah, I don't remember. Either way, we should, could you chair that?
Yeah.
Great, that'd be great, so Pam can help set it up and-
As long as it doesn't derail the fire rate department.
Well, we'll help make sure that doesn't get derailed.
Well, one of the goals with Pam going forward is after making adjustments to HR is for her focus on mortgage management. So she'll be, I think that having one person driving it, you know, along with the committee, yeah. Well, Pam can be very persuasive when she thinks so. You know, I hope this is a show turner for special talents to-
Schedule wise, we didn't meet last week for protest, right?
No.
All right, so a couple of updates on what I did. Like, I went down to Bellefonte and met with Commissioner Higgins down there, got a really great tour of the town, just to- got a really great tour of the town just a few years ago. They were in a position arguably worse than we're in, uh, in terms of, um, their towns, their town center was kind of dying off. I mean, Warren's doing great, but, um, uh, they have, they don't really have a population decline problem like we do either. But either way, it was really great to go see all the economic development work that they were doing. Fantastic job in terms of doing incubators and business accelerators and the kind of things that I'm trying to do here. And they've really turned down the, turned around the center of town in a matter of two, three years. So, I'm hopeful that, uh, we can take a page out of their playbook and have the same sort of effect here. Um, I also hosted with the WCCBI a entrepreneurship day at the Conawago Club. I think we had almost 20 entrepreneurs, small business owners show up for it. Speaker was primarily Brian Slawin from Ben Franklin Technology Partners, and he spoke on kind of demystifying Angel Investment, and then they brought one of the companies in that they helped fund. So it was pretty inspirational, I know I got the wheels turning a lot of work on there in terms of what we can be doing for our kind of development. Uh, I also visited Bear Lake Borough, just because I'd never actually been to one of their meetings before, so I thought it'd be good to drop in on them and see what concerns they had going on. Didn't sound like there was really anything that the county could help with per se. I also went down to Harrisburg with Todd Lake Tuesday afternoon and testified on Wednesday before Senate Joint Hearing on interoperability for our radio communication systems. I will be sending press reads over to you shortly regarding it. But it was a really good and fruitful trip. I'm hopeful, first of all, the Senate, I was surprised, they were actually very knowledgeable about the radio system and the need for interoperability that almost no county in the state has. And so, we kind of gave our perspective as a microcosm in rural county up north. The other people to testify were from the state police. So we were the only, we were the county representative, basically. And went very well. In terms of schedule, just to let you know, on Friday, I'm going to Harrisburg, really for my cousin's wedding. So I'll be out on Friday. I'm also gonna be down at Harrisburg on Monday for more county-type stuff, try to meet with folks while I'm down there. Uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, I should be here, but, um, at some point, I'm gonna be picking up the, um... There's a Chinese company based near Shanghai that's looking to do foreign direct investment. I've had a relationship with them for a couple of years, and I'm encouraging them to move here rather than Virginia, which is the other place that they're eyeing. And they are coming up, or at least the CEO is coming up next week for two or three days to check out the town, see some sights, and also relax. I'm gonna take him out on the Alagani for a little bit, too.
You should go to the writing event. I'm just saying, that's the next step of, uh...
Anyway. So, if you see me walking around with, uh, Asian gentlemen, be sure to say hi and welcome them. Like I said, I'm really hopeful that this could be kind of a gem within the economic ecosystem. It's high-tech, really good paying jobs, um, and I think has a lot of potential. So, I'm gonna probably bring him here one day, give him a little tour, try to meet some government-related folks. DCD will be coming up for it. Um, and then, I guess probably next Friday will be the fun day, so. I'm gonna have to do the laborious thing of taking this guy out on the river and maybe up to Jake's Rocks. Yeah.
Well, I have to just...
You have that? Do you have it for that? All right. Anyway.
What was that one, something?
Yeah, I don't wanna hate on them.
But that's how we handle this, right?
Yeah, I'll have to do that. Either way, um, I'll be out pretty much the last half of next week. I mean, I'll be in and out, but I won't be very available for anything. Uh, do you have anything for your schedule you wanna update us on?
I'm just busy.
Tim, do you have anything schedule-wise?
Uh, no, I just have some committee meetings coming up, and, uh, I did wanna bring to the attention that there's a mystery well, 135 event on Saturday, uh, this coming Saturday, June 17th. It's the 135th anniversary of the Cherry Grove oil boom. Uh, it's free and it's open to the public, and, uh, there's lots of different events going on during the day, nine to five. The Cherry Grove Fire Hall, so anyone who might wish to attend, it's a free event, and should, it's supposed to be some fun, entertainment, educational.
Good. I can't make it unfortunately because I've got that wedding, but, uh, I hope it goes well.
Let me try to take my kids out of that.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Um, I have, let's see here, um, EOC, EOC, um, Finance Committee, EOC Board Meeting, EOC Strategic Planning Meeting. I have a conference call with PA First Team Net, First Net Team, I'm sorry. And, uh, looks like that, should be it for my committee meetings. Jeff?
Uh, so, uh, I don't know, I've got to make sure I go on. I had a meeting last week with Annie Wolkins, who is, uh, the Northwest Regional Coordinator for the Special Children's Network, and, uh, Special Kids Network. I can't remember the name. But, um, anyway, we talked about, I've had a couple of conversations with her about a, uh, potential of having a registry within the county that will tie into, um, 911 and the police departments, um, that will allow people to self-register persons with special needs, um, in the database so that when they have calls and have issues and, uh, you know, first responders or, you know, medical professionals, whatever, will be able to pull that information up as a part of their response so that they can, you know, make adjustments to how they respond to the, the actual, uh, you know, the event, whatever. Maybe a lot of really difficult logistical challenges with this. I had a phone conversation with Todd Lake about it and, uh, basically going to set up a meeting with him, people from DHS, and, uh, maybe a couple other people to have a conversation about how we can get this rolling. It's something that's new, um, that's being done in, in, um, in a handful of counties within the state, and most of those are big counties that have more resources than we do. So, it's hard to say what, if anything, we'll be able to do, but, um, I, I really wanna try to figure out a way to see if we can get creative and figure out a way to make it work, um, just because I think it would be a huge asset with the number of, you know... And, and when I say special needs, it's not just, um, you know, like persons with disabilities or people who are born with disabilities, but, um, seniors that have, um, you know, various mental health issues and stuff like that. And so, it's, it's a very broad, um, spectrum, um, you know. And that's why, one of the, the big challenges is, is keeping it up to date, basically. We have a lot of, we've, we've kind of spitballed a lot of very simple ways to enter data into the system, but maintaining it is gonna be the real logistical challenge. And so, um, we're gonna try to get, you know, a few brains together and see if we can, you know, come up with some solutions to that. So that's one thing. I'm gonna be sending today a proposal to you and Ben and to the courts and a few other people as far as the signage situation around the courthouse. A couple of months ago, or actually a while longer than that ago, we, we did a walkthrough of the courthouse and the surrounding area, and this is a part of the kind of response to single point of entry and a few other things. Like, some of the signage we have around the courthouse is very old, and it's either falling apart or it's outdated or, you know, needs to be redone. So, Matt did a really, was really wonderful about, um, he, he did some research on some sign companies and then also, um, took, took some pictures of different forms of signage that different counties use and sent it to me. And we're really gonna try to, uh, to some degree, some of what we're gonna do is gonna be modeled after Elk County, um, which I think is spending since their courthouse is almost exactly the same as ours. But, uh, they have these really nice artisanal signs that, that point to the various entry points within the courthouse. As we've stated previously, since single point of entry became a thing, there's been a lot of issues with people finding their way into the building and kind of understanding where to go. So, and, and there are, there are even issues that predate that where people, people having a hard time finding the jail, knowing which entrance to go into to get, to go to different, uh, to different departments. So, I'll be sending that to you guys to look, you know, to pick through and, um, and to think about and, and try to get some feedback from the courts and some other, some of the other interested parties. The GIS mapping data, I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. We, essentially, the GIS mapping data is, is online, but with the current vendor that we have, there's an issue with the way it's set up. And basically, you can only use Internet Explorer on it, um, and that's it. And, and it's, it's a big problem. Plus, the setup is kind of dated and, and nobody really likes it, so we haven't really ruled it out. But basically, the vendor has a new setup that doesn't require Microsoft Silverlight, which is, uh, it's, it's, it's gonna be completely browser-based. So right now, we're in the process of basically hammering them to get this new system set up so that we can get the GIS mapping data online, so that people can see property lines and, and some of the other layers of data that we have available within the courthouse that currently you have to come to the courthouse and get a printout of, uh, in order to get, to get it. So, we're very close to having the GIS mapping data online. It's just been, um, you know, kind of, you know, at first, we thought that the, the stuff was being blocked through our firewall, and then everybody tested it in various places, and then basically we found out that it was a piece of junk. And we've gotta, we've gotta get them to, to update it, so. So that's something. Oh, I, I'm going to be having a meeting, the, um, the scout that is working on the benches for the bike trail has a plan to initiate that and basically wants to present that. So I'm gonna be meeting with him, uh, within the next week or two in order to have like a, basically a proposal to bring to the commissioners, and then, so that we can do a yay or nay on it and move forward with having benches installed, or benches built and then installed. He did a lot of research, I was very happy with everything that he's put together so far, so. I'm gonna be, um, to add, you know, more things to the list, I guess, I'm gonna be pretty involved with, um, Winterfest this year. I had, I've had a couple of meetings with, um, you know, various people involved with Winterfest in the past years. It's, um, they're kind of at a place where they're in a transition, I think, and, um, it'll be good for them to have, uh, new people involved, you know, um, doing a lot of different things. We're gonna, right now, we're working on essentially kind of, um, to some degree, rebranding the event and then, um, having like a whole new rollout of it in order to, um, you know, increase interest, increase donations, increase attendance, and, um, and really highlight a lot of the really great things that have to do with Winterfest. It's a, it's a fantastic event, it's very unique in the region. And so, I, I really don't wanna see it go by the wayside or, or, uh, you know, kind of become dormant. And so, uh, um, you know, I'm really excited about working with them on that 'cause I, I, you know, I, I enjoyed, you know, events and, and they, they let me, they're gonna let me redesign logos, so. So that's part of the fun. That's, that's part of the fun for me is like to get into branding and new marketing stuff on it, so that's fun. The only other thing is, is that, uh, the, um, I'm going to be, I don't have it, uh, this week, and, and I, and I, again, preface this by saying that I was off last week. I decided to go on vacation, uh, Detroit. Very interesting, interesting trip. But anyway, uh, I'm gonna be sending you guys, uh, for a review at the next work session, a, um, what will be a resolution, basically, kind of authorizing the... And, and also a packet of information, talking about the marketing branding group that I had talked about last year and have been working on. Basically, we're having our initial meeting this month, and, um, and it's basically gonna be an organizational meeting to get a complete framework for what the group is going to do, and, um, and then what I like to do is incorporate that as a part of a proposal along with the resolution, uh, to the commissioner's office so that you guys could review it. If you're comfortable with everything that's in it, the, the kind of, um, task that the group is gonna be involved with, then, you know, pass it as a resolution and then have it be a functioning committee, subcommittee essentially under the commissioner's office that will be, um, doing marketing and branding within the county. And, and basically, you know, coordinating with various organizations within the county in order to, you know, do, you know, propose and coordinate a variety of projects that'll have, that'll be related to that. And the other thing is, is I've been meeting with the, um, the Blight Property Committee, and, um, and also I'm gonna be going to some RDA meetings, um, and I, I wanna have a...
Everyone's like literally falling asleep. Oh, you think you're still with them? Give me a break. I wasn't here last week. Why, I can quit.
Do you have a city or a city or just a...
No, the, the Blight Property Commission, which meets here like monthly, I guess. And, uh, I haven't gone to an RDA meeting yet, but, um, the meetings that I went to to discuss Blight Property was very interesting, a lot of good information. There are some things that I wanna share with the other two commissioners as far as, some things that we might be able to do, um, in order to help them deal with Blight property within the county. There, um, there's some things ordinance-wise that I think that could change that would, um, help facilitate what they do and then also help, um, in the remediation of a lot of the issues related to Blight. There's, um, a lot of situations where the county's left, or I should say the county, but the organization is left holding the bag for, you know, various decisions that people make or, um, the way things are set up. And I think there are too many loopholes that allow people to kind of, um, skirt the system to some degree when it comes to Blight property. You know, I also think it's something that we have to have a larger discussion about is what we're gonna do with the Blight property situation in, in the county.
We stopped somewhere.
Yeah, you're trying to...
He's trying not to.
Yeah. Well, that's the thing is now I'm looking at you and you're like fighting it off.
Do you want...
Would you be interested in the, uh, city or are you...
Yeah, absolutely. I definitely wanna...
Can I put...
Well, no, I mean, I'd be interested in going and meeting with them and hearing what they're doing.
The city of Blight is probably a far better...
Yeah.
Going to that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Can I put a handbag on your...
Sure, I mean...
How many numbers are compared to, what the county has compared to the city of...
Well, the thing is, is it goes through these phases where there, you know, there's, there's a lot of motivated people involved and then, and there's a huge increase. And then, you know, the interest lanes or, you know, um, and I, and I think the thing is, is, is something that we've gotta take a look at because Blight's a problem, like, you know, part of this, what anybody...
Well, I think the city is starting back up, so.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what I mean, is, is the, um, and, and having tar... I was just, there's a lot of, um, logistical things related to Blight where, um, depending upon how the ordinances are set up within the county, it, it, in some ways, it penalize, you know, it's like a lot of things, it penalizes the people who do their due diligence and do the work, and then the people who are bums get, you know, get by. And I, so that's part of it. The other part of it is, is what can we do to, to facilitate the issue of dealing with Blight, like within the county just generally, because, um, it's, it's a problem, you know, I mean, we, you know, I mean, it's, it's a patchy... I mean, we, you know, I mean, it's, it's a patchy problem, you know, depending upon which part of the county you're in, but, um, it's something that we've got to, we've got to work on and develop, so I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to those meetings and that I, there are some things that I'm going to be pitching to you guys. Um, that's it. Commissioner Cap?
Are you done Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, Ben, um, a couple, uh, work sessions ago, I brought to your attention the WEX, um, fuel agreement that had been signed, that you had signed with, um, Enterprise, and then I guess you made a phone call and put that on hold, and I wanted to recommend that the county go with the United Refining WEX card, and in looking over and, um, reviewing the information that I've been given, I noticed that, um, county purchases at United and United affiliated stations represented 50 to 100% of all the gasoline charges for the county, so I think it makes good sense to go with the United refining. So, I'd like to propose that, um, yander into a contract with them, or at least propose that at our next board meeting.
Yeah, uh, after that meeting, I did, uh, briefly look into it, uh, went ahead and canceled the Enterprise one, um, and maybe a couple of days after that, uh, the fleet management guy at United called me and gave me some more details. I understood that you and Judy were working on it, so I sent everything her way, you know, I, yes, it looks like it makes sense to go with Quickfill by far, um, it's kind of in Judy's court to get stuff together, I guess.
Okay, so, um, the, the contract that you did sign with WEX, um, Enterprise, you were able to get out of that agreement that you signed?
Yeah, it wasn't really an agreement, I mean, it was like a, would you use our services that fits within the existing agreement?
Uh, well, it looked like an agreement, to me you would sign it, so, um, okay, I just wanted to make sure that we could go with United.
Yes.
Alright, and, uh, it's still there?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, um, knowing that the judicial sale is not going to take place in June, um, and now we're looking at a September judicial sale, the sheriff came to us asking us to put a bill for $16,000 for, um, notifying those that were taking their property and was going to go up for sale. Um, now we're going to have to reissue those same notices going forward in September. Is there a way that we won't be on the hook again for another 16,000?
It will be less than that this time, because we have good addresses, so I can't, I don't really exact figure what the survey will be.
Okay, well, I contacted, uh, the sheriff's office to get a little more information on that, and they explained basically the same thing that you just told me, that they have some better addresses, but basically, they felt that we were going to, again, be looking at roughly very close to 16,000, so, now that's $32,000 that we spent on the judicial sale, and I wanted to know if there's a way that we can figure out within the county how we can, um, save our taxpayers from being, footing this bill for another 16,000. So, if you can be creative and try to come up with something, I understand that you and the solicitor, um, you know, had some problems with the filings for the court, so, whatever you can do to mitigate this problem and from happening in the future, please, I would request that you respectfully with the solicitors figure that out.
Will do.
Okay, um, I have nothing further, does anyone else?
Yep, I can be quick, my, um, updates for the organizations are as follows. Salvation Army is doing a breakfast kettle kickoff, uh, in the fall for their, um, Red Kettle Hole, their kettle, uh, fun drive. I'm going to be chairing a committee to get that breakfast up and going, and I'm using Julie a little bit to help me schedule that and, uh, figure it out. Workforce Development Board, we, um, will be hiring ResCare, which is a for-profit entity rather than GCAC, uh, to administer the workforce development system. Um, I've been very impressed with them so far, I'm chairing the committee on negotiating with them. Northwest Commission, we had our board meeting, um, not last Friday, but the Friday before, nothing really to update anybody on. And LEPC slash Emergency Medical Services and all things 911, uh, the only thing to update on would really be that we're putting Julie on running, um, a big campaign, uh, in order to get people to sign up for the, um, emergency notification system that we implemented with the surrounding counties. Um, I expect that in the near future she'll be coming to us with, uh, requests to go to the paper, post stuff on Facebook, et cetera, et cetera. That's it. Anything else? Anything from the public? Alright, good, I guess we can go ahead and adjourn.